The answer is okay. I thought, okay, you know, I'm just gonna put it out there. And he is putting it in too.
Yeah, the perfect water, the water, the runoff.
How are you?
I was walking into the same area.
I was looking at the date.
I was looking at the date.
I started going through it. I go, this is full of reading. I can't see.
Well, I was reading.
You guys have audio. Thirty pages. I thought, so that's the, that's. That theory. We're gonna do all of them.
Is the procedure.
Wait a minute, did you get a, did you crack with a three thousand?
It's a three hundred.
Two thousand. Oh, wow. That's what they look for. They got, they, they ruin it.
That's the most. Oh, that's. Sorry. Will you be chief?
He's gonna be.
Was the interior. Is that where that last shot? It's getting to my.
I don't want to.
It's a fact.
That's what we wanted to do.
I just.
Yeah, sorry.
I think. You were fired.
Yeah.
Oh.
Uh, I am not.
May I get a mic screen, please? We're about to get started here.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
And the clock has struck thirty, so I would ask that we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want you to start by wishing everybody a good evening to those that are here in person and/or tuning in via our virtual broadcasts. And with that, Clerk Tomasic, please call roll.
Schumate?
Here.
Cox?
Here.
McNabb?
Here.
Molnar? He was here. Valentine?
Here.
Walden?
Wood?
Here.
Counsel will be looking for a motion to excuse absent members, Molnar and Walden.
Motion to excuse absent members Molnar and Walden.
Is there a second? Just for discussion purposes, I believe Councilman Molnar is here just taking care of a matter, so I would expect we would be able to seat him here shortly. With that, Clerk Tomasic, please call roll.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion carried. Our next topic on our agenda is going to be our approval of our agenda. Counsel, you will have seen information coming through Clerk Tomasic, and I have some additions that are being proposed to our agenda this evening. The first addition that's being proposed would be to add a item under DPW Director Sont's agenda. So we would be looking to add the purchase of street and traffic signs according to the information provided by Clerk Tomasic via John. John, anything you want to add for background context there?
This is to replace existing inventory and some traffic signs that we don't have. Like on the S turn, we got some bad ones over there, and the new signs are all reflective.
Great. So counsel, we'd be looking for a motion to add item J, which would be under DPW Director Sont, and that would be purchase of street and traffic signs. Is there a motion to add item J?
Motion to add item J.
Motion by McNabb.
Second.
Second by Wood. Any discussion on this matter?
And these are some new signs, too, for the skate pork ramp, stuff like the skate park.
Yeah, park closed.
Adding signs and new signs.
We got two signs we're adding over there.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All right, Clerk Tomasic will have you call roll.
McNabb?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
A motion carried, so John, your item J will be as such. The, the, there's two other additions that have been requested by Fire Chief Simon, who is not here this evening. So I'll defer to you if you want to represent any additional information, but the first motion to add a item, and this would be for Fire Chief Simon to report on our agenda, would be item B. And that would be a request to approve the payment of twenty-five-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars to Wayne County Community College District for 2024 EMT fall tuition and fees. Counsel, just for background, you'd already approved this at your eight-fourteen meeting, but there's a request to make sure we had the right details, personnel, and specifics. So that has came through via Fire Chief Simon, so we want to be adding that for formal approval, and that again would be item B. So is there a motion to add item B on the payment to Wayne County Community College District for EMT?
Twenty-twenty-four? Twenty-five?
It should state twenty-twenty-five. The packet information states twenty-twenty-four, so correct. Is there a motion to add that?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Wood. Clerk Tomasic, do you have that motion captured? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Valentine. Counsel, any discussion on this matter? Clerk Tomasic will have you call roll whenever you're ready.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Great. And then the last proposed addition to the agenda would also be under Fire Chief Simon report, so this would be item C. And this would be a request to approve our fire department personnel to provide an EMS standby crew for the four home Carlson regular season varsity football games. So we'd be looking for a motion to add item C, which is our EMS presence at the Carlson regular season varsity football games, four of which are detailed in the information provided. Is there a motion to add item C?
Make a motion.
Motion by McNabb for, for item C under the Fire Chief report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Valentine. Counsel, any discussion on this matter? All right, Clerk Tomasic will have you call roll whenever you are ready.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Fantastic. All right, motion carried, so that will be item C. With that being said, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as revised?
Motion to approve revised agenda.
Motion by Cox, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wood. Any discussion on this matter? Clerk Tomasic will have you call roll whenever you're ready.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes. All right, with an approved agenda, with the three additions that we just discussed, we would love to turn it over to our public. Are there any members of public that wish to address counsel this evening?
John Wood, three oh-one-two-six Adams Drive. You just okayed all the, the football games. How about if it goes into playoffs and all that stuff? Should have had it wrote, "All games played at Carlson."
It's a good point. We only okayed just the addition of that item to the agenda.
What happens if they go into the playoffs and all that stuff, so?
At this point, we've only added it to the agenda. We'll have to discuss that and motion for that at the Fire Chief's report, but it's a, it's a good call. The, the recommendation we received from Fire Chief was the four games we identified.
Inquiring minds want to know.
Appreciate that. Are there any additional public comments, and if not, we will close public comment. All right, public comment is closed. Counsel, can we have a motion to seat Councilman Molnar, please?
Motion to seat Councilman Molnar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Valentine, any discussion? Clerk Tomasic, please call roll.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Motion carried. All right, that will bring us to our consent agenda. Counsel, in your packet, and members of public as published, we have items A through H for our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through H?
Motion to approve items A through H.
Motion by Valentine, is there a second?
Second.
Second by McNabb. Counsel, any discussion on consent agenda? Clerk Tomasic, whenever you're ready, we'll have you call roll.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
All right, counsel, that will bring us to our communications for which we have done this evening, and so I would like to take it to my report. In my report this evening, I have three items for you. We'll go one at a time. The first item is our intergovernmental agreement for purchase and use of weed harvester. Just want to open up by reinforcing my gratitude for Councilman McNabb and all that you're doing on the waterways as a liaison for counsel in addition to an active participant in helping the cause. I also want to give a shout out to Mike Overwater and all the Waterway Commission members. I am incredibly grateful, and I know our community is, for the work that's been done to leverage our existing weed harvester as much as feasible to keep those waterways clear and clean for this community and all the boaters that leverage it, so just thank you. I also want to thank Councilman McNabb and Mike and other parties in the waterways because, and our attorney, because we've had a chance to meet with the Wayne County representatives, and they have arrived at a point where we will be getting a grant in the amount of the weed harvester for which the five-year agreement will cover, and then subsequent to that five-year expiration, we will have ownership of the weed harvester as a city of Gibraltar. To me, it's a great step for the community in that we will have our own experts through the Waterways Commission, have the oversight, the control, and the execution and maintenance, and we, as a city of Gibraltar, will have residence of that weed harvester according to the intergovernmental agreement. So with that being said, counsel, you would have received the intergovernmental agreement from Clerk Tomasic, which was obviously a reflection of our city attorney working with the county's representatives, including their counsel, to arrive at that. Obviously, there's a lot of details to figure out, but this is the first step that's imperative to formalize this IGA so that we can execute the transfer of funds appropriately with the county, which will then lead to the procurement of the weed harvester and subsequent utilization. So what am I asking for? I am asking for your support, counsel. I would like a motion to authorize the intergovernmental agreement with Wayne County for the purchase and use of the weed harvester. That will, us to sign it from a city of Gibraltar perspective, obviously, a lot of the county representatives to execute it, and then the next step would be I'd be working with you and the Waterways Commission to execute the procurement process for the equipment once we've received our funds. So is there a motion to authorize the IGA for purchase and use of weed harvester?
I'll make the motion.
A motion by Wood, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Molnar. Any discussion on this matter beyond what was laid out in the IGA in the background?
I believe the IGA is finalized, right?
That is correct.
It's done. It's ready to be great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Tony, for that work.
City Attorney, anything you wanted to add on that topic?
No, went back and forth on it a few times and took a lot of time to get here, but we're finally here, and we'll get the city, the funds that are required to make the purchase, so it's in a good spot.
Fantastic.
Before September, like you wanted.
To reiterate your point, I know that Art has spent a lot of hours on the phone with the county commissioner and put a lot of, a lot of effort in, and he's a man of few words here, but did a lot of work to.
I'm just glad to be able to move this thing down the road.
Yeah. I don't.
No, down the waterway.
Down the wa, down the waterway would be, yeah, exactly. So I, I, I just want to, again, thank counsel and Councilman McNabb especially, obviously gratitude to the county for arriving at this point. A tremendous benefit to the community and the city of Gibraltar, obviously with one weed harvester that's, we're trying to keep alive as best as possible. This would be obviously.
Doing that this year.
This is obviously a much more sustainable solution with a new harvester that will benefit our community for many years to come, for which we will have ownership of here centrally in the city of Gibraltar. So with that being said, any further discussion on this matter? Clerk Tomasic will have you call roll.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion carried. Second item on my agenda, counsel, in our last meeting, you had authorized me to sign the Third Amendment to the City of Gibraltar Public Safety Officers Retirement System, which was conditional on the changes that we had included for you. Just for the sake of procedural completeness, I have actually gotten the final version to you that reflected those changes. City Attorney, again, thank you for all the work you did with the pension attorney and the union representatives. To our union representatives, thank you for what was very constructive dialogue every step of this way. So counsel, I'm just looking for your formal authorization, a motion to authorize the execution of the Third Amendment to the City of Gibraltar Public Safety Officers Retirement System. Do we have a motion?
Motion to execute the Third Amendment to the City of Gibraltar Public Safety Officers Retirement System.
Motion by Valentine, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Molnar. Any further discussion on this matter? What I want, what I want to let you know is what's going to happen next is we will have the pension board meeting for which they will have this as a agenda item, which would then authorize the chair of the pension board to countersign, but we have agreement with the union, and so we're all good to go, and that will be the procedural path that will take place next. With that, Clerk Tomasic will have you call roll.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
All right, administrative updates. Excited on this one. The first item I have is counsel, you would have received via Clerk Tomasic an update regarding our Double Hall Solutions partnership to find our next city administrator. The highlights are, the timeline is progressing with, I would say, an expeditious mindset, so I just want to thank Double Hall Solutions for moving as fast as possible without sacrificing the quality of the partnership. The second thing is that we were educated by our Double Hall Solutions partners that they did find additional candidates beyond our shortlist of candidates, which is a very great value offering, because one of the reasons we partner with them is to make sure no stone left unturned as far as the candidate pool, so fantastic news there. What am I asking for you this evening? The Double Hall Solutions partners have proposed a timeline of how we're going to arrive at the appointment of our next city administrator, which will involve, their proposal, a special meeting on Wednesday, September third. That would be a closed session for council's review of candidates and to identify who we would be extending an interview to. The second step would be then on September eleventh and twelfth, they're proposing a, I would say, a two-day vetting strategy, which would involve candidate onboarding sessions, lunch discussions with all of our staff and city personnel, an operational and community-oriented tour approach. You could do community open house and other ways of engaging with the members of public. Again, this would be all with a shortlist of candidates, and that would then segue to formal interviews with the candidates that would be scheduled for about seventy minutes apiece. And the proposal for that is on September eleventh and twelfth, so a two-day kind of mix of city engagement and city operational personnel engagement, as well as formal interviews by us, counsel. And then step three would involve having an opportunity to move towards deliberation and ultimately selection of the candidate we want to hire, which would be targeted as September fifteenth as a, as a timeline target. So the good news is we have weeks ahead of us that have a very intentional path to taking our shortlisted pool of candidates, interviewing them, and then making a decision as counsel. What am I asking for you this evening is, number one, I want you to make sure you denote in the schedule shared by Double Hall those dates, and I'd like you to express any conflict you have on those dates, because I want to make sure we solidify the dates. Again, September third. The September eleventh one would be more, I would say, internal requirements, but I'd liking council's engagement on that, and then September twelfth is going to be critical, obviously, for the element of those progressions of, of interviews and, and candidate interface. So I guess what I'd, what I'd like to say is, take a look at all the dates, please make a note of your calendar and flag any dates that you're not available. You don't have to do that this evening, but let's make sure you do that. The only one I want to land this evening is the special meeting on September third for five or six PM, which would be a closed session for candidate review. So I'd like a motion, and I could schedule this offline if you prefer, but I want to make sure we're all aligned on, on counsel, September third, which is a Wednesday, five PM or six PM, closed session for candidate review. I would like a motion to schedule that.
Is, is there any other days in the week that are the options, or is that what's laid out by Double Hall? Is it?
That's what's laid out by Double. Do you have a conflict that day?
I do. It's one of those, one of those commitments that I can get out of. But if it was another day, I wouldn't have to, you know, if it was Thursday, the fifth, I would be wide open.
What is everybody else's availability, just so we can get a gauge?
I also have a problem with September third.
Okay.
In the evening, I have a problem.
Do you have a, do you have a September fourth availability?
No.
Are you good on September fourth, too?
Yeah, I'm, and I'm open during the daytime on the third. It's, it's after four PM on the, on the third, I'm not, but.
Okay. Let's do this, just for the sake of not making a rush decision so we can get everybody's availability and so I don't make a decision that Nate can't honor from Double Hall.
Sure.
I can send an email to schedule the special meeting, so let me work with you all offline. Why don't you just plan on either earlier time slot on the third, which I know can be challenging for some. Cox, you're out of that?
I do.
Okay, never mind. So then September fourth will be our target. Let me just make sure there's no reason why Nate and team couldn't be available for that.
Okay, cool.
Is everybody okay, just to get conditional, everybody okay with like a five PM or a six PM start time on the fourth? Everybody good? Okay, fantastic. I will work with Nate and I will schedule that via email with our clerk. Clerk Tomasic, anything you would flag as issues for that day, fourth? Okay, cool.
I have a question. So they're requesting a closed session to review candidates. Are the candidates requesting a closed session?
Yeah, it was expressed that that would be the first step in the confidentiality process, to not lift that until they have been invited and confirmed for an interview, so that's what the.
To make clear the candidates are requesting that they get.
Yeah, for confidentiality.
Their applications, okay.
That's my understanding.
So to do the special meeting, then, you could get a two-thirds vote to go into it?
Perfect.
For close, so just make certain that that happens.
Attendance-wise. I appreciate the procedural guidance, thank you.
No problem at all.
Okay, so I'll schedule it offline. All right, um, counsel, I gave a couple other updates in my packet here, which is related to the pension activities, which we've already discussed. Some other administrative items that I wanted you to have visibility to. The time card policy that we're hoping to implement, which we'll have another subsequent meeting to review that in more detail. The commission member for planning and DDA appointment, we've received two applicants. I'd spoken with some of you offline, counsel, and I suggested that since the planning and DDA meeting is September sixteenth, I would recommend that we look to make that appointment on September eighth, which is our next council meeting, which would still allow time for the candidate to be seamlessly sliding into our planning meeting on September sixteenth. So I want to make sure you had the applicants we had so far. And then I gave an update on the strategic priorities. Strategic priorities that I put in our packet all have the same model here, where we highlight and bold some of the progression. All I would say is a couple things. One, huge shout-outs to John amongst all of the parties at play. I mean, we are making significant moves across every project that we've identified and put in this man's court, and there's no coincidence that we see his agendas being through item J. We're going deep into the alphabet on John, but I, I want to just thank you, John, because you're getting the ball moving on all these projects. I also want to thank counsel for embracing the interim engineer in AEW, which obviously we need to parlay into a longer-term pathway through the appropriate RFPs and process that we want to follow there. I also want to flag to you, counsel, as one of my items that I'd like your support on. I don't know if we need any action, attorney, I'll, I'll look to you on this. With Benesh, our water loss consultant, the good news is, and Councilman Valentine, I believe this was a meeting you were not able to attend, but we had a, a water loss percentage that was tracking above thirty percent, and based on the work by our team and partnership with the water loss consultant, Benesh, we now have our most recent read at thirteen percent, a massive reduction in water loss, which is one of our strategic priorities from the beginning of this administration, and is a huge win for this community. So just want to hats off. What happened next was, Treasure Fonti, keep me honest here, because you were a part of this. We had a meeting with Treasure Fonti, Mr. Sont, Benesh, Chelsea internally, who does a lot of work day-to-day on this topic, Bill Kane from DPW, and the goal was to take a loop close of the water loss detection, so all that acoustic testing that helped us with, in addition to the replacement of the meters, brown sound included, get this water loss drop. We want to have a, a formal report, so they're going to be producing a formal report for counsel, just so you have kind of all of that loose end tied up. We have also asked them to segue their work into an exhaustive forensic audit, if you will, of our meters, as well as our accounting and operational considerations around the water operation here in the city of Gibraltar. I'm super excited because they have expertise in this area. They have technology exposure in this area. So Chelsea and our DBW team are working on getting them all the information they can around what we have today on file, and they're going to do an exhaustive inventory of how we currently manage meters, where there might be unmetered usage, what technology we could use to better drive efficiency and effectiveness in that operation, all the accounting associated with the operation as the next phase of this partnership. What I did, and this is where, City Attorney, I'd like your guidance, we had asked them to honor their wages as opposed to renegotiate that partnership, and so they did just that. They honored their wages from their twenty-five wage scale to their twenty-six wage scale. I don't know if we need a procedural motion to authorize the continuation. We already have an active agreement with them. They just gave us an updated wage scale, and then Clerk Tomasic sent that to counsel, but just wanted your guidance there and if there's any formal action required.
I don't recall the initial agreement that was approved, but if it's an open-ended and it's a T and M type agreement, then it would just be continuation of that.
Okay, so counsel, basically right now, my, and Treasure Fonti, keep me honest here, because you were a part of this, but now my impression is that they're going to honor their wages, their wage rates, I should say, for twenty-six. So as this partnership continues to progress under the scope of our agreement, they will honor that, and Amy, our finance director, is going to be the gatekeeper on the invoicing. So she's going to have regular intervals where she checks in with them based on the progression of this work. Treasure Fonti, anything you want to add?
No, they even added that they will help us with the negotiations with GLEA, GLEWA, and the upcoming water rate decisions.
Awesome.
Yeah.
So in my opinion, great news all around on the waterfront. Lot more work to do, but the signals are trending very, very positively, and just thank you, counsel, for the support on it, and we will be able to keep our wage rates that we've already negotiated with Benesh in the contract we have. Counsel, we'll go into other details unless you have any questions on the rest of the strategic priority update. Any questions for me? Items you'd like me to cover? All right, with that, that will close my report, and let's get to council reports. Councilman Valentine, talk to us about life in thirty-third district court.
I have no report, sir.
Any questions for Councilman Valentine? Councilwoman Wood, you want to take us to beautification commission and an historical museum?
I will. Beautification report is the same report as it was two weeks ago. We're still weeding and watering and continuing, but fall is in the air, and so we will be moving toward, towards that with mums and pumpkins, you know, probably next month. We also have, I wanted to say this, we also have Horse Island Bridge t-shirts for sale, as well as the anchor decals. So those are available at City Hall. They're available from any of the beautification members, and they're also available in the museum.
Amazing.
So taking us to the museum, then, it's open September seventh from two to four PM, and as I said, the bridge t-shirts and decals. Also, there are Horse Island prints for sale in the museum, so just want to let everybody know that, and that's my report.
Amazing. Thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Councilwoman Wood? All right, Councilman Cox?
Well, due to prior conflict, I was not able to attend the last DDA and planning commission, so I have no report. If you would like to inform us of what occurred.
I would love to. And Parks and Recreation Director, you can keep me honest, because you represented some of that. At a high level, going off the cuff here, we had a budget update from Finance Director McEwen related to spending the bond allocation that's remaining. I'd say the high-level takeaway was many of the projects are progressing, so thank you, John and team. Art, for example, even leaning in on roofs amongst other projects. So the bond projects that we are leveraging funds for related to DDA are progressing, but Amy flagged that the timeline of, I think it's May twenty-twenty-six, for which those funds need to be utilized in totality, that we. to be utilized in, in totality, that we might want to have backup projects that we start pulling in to make sure we spend every penny in that. So Amy had mentioned a couple projects to the DDA members that are supplemental to this priority list, Councilman Cox, that you and the DDA had ultimately worked to help establish and prioritize, where we can start weaving in to make sure we hit all the spend on that. So at a high level, we might have a little more funds available, which will allow us to pull more projects in there to make sure we spend every penny in the bond allocation. But the good news is we're cranking on those projects between the, the parking lots and the roof and all these other projects, generators, everything else are, are rocking and rolling. We just need to make sure we spend every penny, and so we might be able to pull them, some things in. The second thing that came up was a big shout-out to Parks and Recreation Director, his commission members have been amazing partners, police and fire, DPW, clerk, everybody that was involved for what was an awesome 4th of July. And the goal was to take update on the expenditures relative to revenues for the 4th of July. Keep me honest, Parks and Recreation Director, but at a high level, some of the majority cost, as you look at the highest line item, was like the fireworks. The carnival festivities were very well-received. I thought Wade Show's did a phenomenal job. The takeaway was to make sure that they come back next year, I hope. So we got to lock that agreement down, Parks and Recreation Director. I know they alluded to their interest in doing so, but they ended up donating more than the contract had required them to. So just for everybody's background, right, we negotiated agreement where we don't pay a dollar, we get money, and the money was guaranteed at a thousand or more. They gave us 1,500 bucks back. So we didn't spend a penny to get 1,500 back. I think the community really enjoyed the festivities there, but they gave that donation. I'm seeing a head nod, so that's accurate. The investment that was made by DDA in regards to the fencing, barricading systems, I think was very well-received. It was a good investment, because rather than paying to rent these each year, we now own them. So you saw a tick up on the budget, but...
I saw the cost associated in reviewing it that, yeah, that was put in at one time, not amortized over events.
Precisely. So we'll, and that'll pay dividends, which will be great. Parks and Rec. Anything you'd add to that?
Not too much above average.
Okay, cool. So that was like the high-level synopsis, was those two, I think were the key focus. There's a couple sign reviews and planning, two of them to be exact. Cool. Any questions for Councilman Cox or I?
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. That closes, Councilman Cox. Councilman McNabb, talk to us about Waterways and ADW.
Waterways, the gentleman went out and replaced the photocells on the range, range lights on the GBY and on the Horse Island. The bina was done on that the following week or the week after. That's all I have for that. I think the Waterways, I'm going to get with Amy when she gets back, they want to purchase a storage cabinet for extra parts, their oil cans, the oil, their, and they're going to keep it in the DPW building. We just, I discussed that with John and them today. They're not going to get a key to the building, but they do want to have a storage cabinet to put all their extra stuff in and lock it and keep it, because with this weed harvester that we're getting, there's going to be a list of parts that come with it.
Yeah.
And that's about it. I'll just see what we have in our budget. They do want to order the cabinet, and as far as the DDA, there's some upcoming events at the ADW that are, will be discussed in the next meeting. That's all I have for right now.
Amazing. Any questions for Councilman McNabb? Thanks again for all you're doing. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilman Molnar, floor is yours.
No report, sir.
Any questions for Councilman Molnar? All right. Councilman Walden is not with us. Is there anything that we want to take for Councilman Walden related to recreation? All right. With that being said, what a great segue to Parks and Rec. Director Reynolds, floor is yours. Make sure that mic's screened for me.
Good evening, mayor and council. I have one action item tonight. It's to purchase two new benches at the baseball field, one for each dugout. I've talked to John a lot about this, and as you can see with the three benches we have, that cheapest one technically is a portable bench, but John has told me that it would be good enough to use, that we could bolt that one down. Right, John?
Yes.
And then the second option would be just the, the regular mount bench that we're looking to have, but if we can bolt that cheaper portable one down and John's comfortable with it, because DPW would be doing the work, then I'm all right getting that one. And a little background, this is just continuing the renovation of the baseball field. So we're getting some benches in, and then hopefully I get that contract back soon so we can get started on the new fence.
So council, the, the information in your packet, would there be a requirement for a motion to purchase two new benches, one for each dugout, to continue the renovation of the baseball field?
Can we get DDA to pay for the benches?
Um, I'm actually, I would try to ask Amy, but she's not here. I, I'm not sure if we can get DDA to pay for that. If we could, that'd be great.
I, I just won, one thought, right, I don't disagree with that being explored potentially, but the reality too is that they just made quite a significant investment on like the cameras and other, so their, their budget has gotten hit pretty quickly from a 4th of July, and then subsequently well over 100 grand on the entire camera system, technology there. So just mindful of that, that they've, they've contributed quite a fair share to recent purchases.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so if you have this budgeted in Parks and Rec.
Yeah.
I think this would probably...
This can fit in a Parks and Rec budget.
So I'll leave it to you. If you, if you feel like it's time-sensitive, we can, we could look for a motion today. If you want to explore the DDA, you'd have to wait till the 16th.
Right.
For that discussion, then subsequently bring it to the 20, maybe the 22nd meeting of council.
I'm comfortable putting this in the Parks and Recreation budget. I would say, if, John, if you're 100% certain on the, the portable, portable bench, are you, so we don't need to approve an amount of money that would cover the next bench up, or?
Yeah, you can drill them brackets and, and...
Yeah. Okay, perfect.
It'll work.
So we'd, we'd be looking, so then, just to be clarified, you're still looking for the original motion that I had requested?
Yeah.
Okay.
The original motion for two new benches, one for each dugout at the baseball field, in an amount of, if we just said 2,000, that would cover it.
Up to 2,000?
Up to 2,000.
Based on the quotes that you've received here?
Yep.
Make a motion to approve the purchase for the benches accordingly.
Up to 2,000?
Yep.
Second.
Second by Valentine. Katie, do you feel you have what you need?
Is council going to select a vendor, or just up to 2,000 for any vendor, and any of these vendors?
Austin, do you have a direction for us on the specific vendor? I think we are supportive of the bench purchase. I'm not a bench expert. Obviously, there's cost considerations that you'd want to be mindful of, but...
Right.
I'm assuming you're working with John and team.
The only bench that covers is the portable one from, gosh, where is it?
Park Warehouse.
Park Warehouse, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah.
Would you be comfortable with us including that detail in the motion?
Yeah, that's fine.
To the individuals that motioned and seconded, is there any objection to adding the parkhouse language from a vendor perspective?
No, no objection.
Okay, cool. Katie, can we add that to the motion, please? All right, and was there any discussion on this matter? With that, Clerk Tomasic, we'll have you call roll.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Thank you, council. A couple other things I would like to bring up before ending my report is we're bringing back the car show, so that'll be Saturday, September 13th, at the Gibraltar Community Center, from 12:00 to 4:00 PM. So looking forward to that, and then obviously we have another meeting before that, so I'll bring it up again. And then we have two more Music in the Parks before the season ends, so looking forward to those as well.
Amazing.
All right. That's it for me.
Any questions for Parks and Rec. Director Reynolds?
When's, when's that fence coming in for the...
I'm waiting on Wayne County to give me the contract back with their signatures. I did reach out to them again last week.
Yeah.
And I received, we don't have it yet from them, so...
So do we, do we have to wait for them in order to give the contractor the notice to proceed?
That is the, that is what I've gathered, is the, yeah, we have to wait to get started. I can tell the contractor that he was rewarded this, which I've reached, like, I've talked to him, but I haven't told him, "Get started," because we can't get started yet, until we receive the contract back.
Is, is the money assured that it's coming this way?
Yeah.
The reimbursement? Yeah. I have no...
It's working out.
Yeah, we're just waiting on paperwork.
So you couldn't give a notice to proceed to get the materials and that?
I'm sure I can tell them to get the materials. I just don't want anything to, I don't know why anything would go wrong with the contract, because I'm just waiting for them to send it back, but I've just been a little cautious because they haven't sent it back yet.
To be clear, though, we don't have a countersigned agreement with Wayne County, correct?
We don't have, so we...
Wayne County has not signed the agreement.
Right.
So nothing's assured yet as far as funds go.
Right, that's what I'm, yes.
Just need to clarify that.
But, but our, our notice to proceed to, or to enter into a contract with the vendor, didn't we already do that?
I don't know if we already did that part, but you already approved, though, the agreement with Wayne County to get the funding for the project.
I, I guess maybe the question is, was that contract contingent upon you getting the Wayne County?
Right.
I don't think it was, but...
Yeah, it sounds like we need to look at the paper trail here. Can you make sure you work with attorney, make sure he's got all the information that we just discussed?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think the, the reason on the table is the season's ending, you'd want to get playing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so...
Even if we, if we paid it out of, out of the city's funds to the contractor and then we waited for the proceeds to come in from the grant, I think this happens all the time.
Agreed, and I think...
Because it's a reimbursement contract anyway, so we have to spend it regardless.
My viewpoint is obviously we don't want to get left exposed, 10K or whatever it is from the county, but at the end of the day, we're still going to do this regardless, are we not?
Yeah.
So let's get to work.